Good evening, everyone. We will now reconvene and resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 7:15 PM. Our flag pledges tonight will be led by Trustee Davis, a retired captain of the U.S. Army. At this time, will everyone please rise? To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic.
One nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Now, Texas flag. Honored Texas flag. Adverently just to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible.
At this time, I will ask those present to quietly observe a moment of silence in your own way. Thank you. Our next item in tonight's agenda is the superintendent's remarks. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our superintendent of schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse, another trustees. Good evening. Hopefully, you all have had a very eventful day. I have several announcements I want to bring up to you based upon our meeting this past week. So last week, we had detailed plans in our work session that were shared with you regarding our targeted improvement plans. As outlined, these tips provide an action plan for campuses to improve performance. Back in October, we spent a lot of time talking about our campus improvement plans, and these tips are an extension of that work. Hopefully, with all the discussion, it was clear, both at October Campus Improvement Plans as well as this month's Targeted Improvement Plans, that despite the ongoing challenges of the pandemic, we're going to be steadfast in our efforts to increase student achievement. We know that COVID-19 has added some challenges that our students and staff are facing, but our commitment to student progress continues to be strong. In fact, hearing firsthand Thursday from our Hirsch principal and Clotton Middle School principal about the work underway at their respective schools, it gave us a clear view of the passion and the work that they are doing within their respective schools to increase student achievement. As such, I want to commend all of our principals and our campus leaders and teachers for all of their work they're doing throughout the school year. In addition, we talked a lot about opportunities and choice. Last week's board session, Springwoods Village Middle School submitted their application to become an international baccalaureate IB school, and you all approved our recommendation. And grant funds for our new early college program at Decane were also accepted. The significance of both of these actions can't be understated as they reflect the ongoing commitment we have to expand opportunities and choice for all of our families within Spring ISD. These two milestones are important to our overall portfolio of choice school programs as both of these specialty schools are embedded within our neighborhood. That's very important because with this move, we are further expanding the range of possibilities for our students. With these programs, students can attend neighborhood schools and have access to all of the great athletic and PVA programs that are typically of a secondary campus while at the same time benefiting from the specialty schools. We know that our families want great options, and these are two examples of what we're doing to provide that. We're hoping Springwoods Village will be officially, excuse me, we're hoping that Springwoods Village will be officially an IB campus as early as next school year with all of the great work and planning that's taken place as presented by our principal. At Decane, we're working hard now to spread the word about our PTEC program, which will debut its inaugural class of ninth graders next fall. So please get the word out and encourage parents in the community to apply for that school. We hope to see a lot of interest because this program will be second to none as it prepares students for college and careers in computer programming and related areas like video gaming and coding. Once again, we want to thank you for your time and encouraging us to make sure we provide great services and education for our community and our students. This does conclude my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Do we have any other board trustees that would like to make remarks? Hearing none, I will share with the board that today Winford Adams, Kelly Hodges, and myself met with Dr. Watson and Dr. Lupita Hannah-Hosser as they introduced us to Cambridge Education Association. They will be handling an audit, an equity audit for our district. The board has chosen to do an equity audit for the district, and I would like to thank Dr. Lupita Hannah-Hosser for taking charge of this journey that we're about to go on and learning about our district. And we appreciate everyone's support and honesty and transparency in going through this equity audit. So, thank you. No other remarks. We will continue with tonight's agenda. Our next item is a point of pride. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our chief of innovations and communications, Tiffany DunOville.
Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and esteemed members of the board. As you can see from our agenda, we have two points of pride this evening and one ABCD award. Our first point of pride tonight goes to a campus administrator who is also a graduate of Spring ISD and has spent much of her career teaching and leading in our district schools. Anderson Elementary School Assistant Principal Latoya Patterson. Latoya, can you wave to everybody? Ms. Patterson was recently named Region Four President-elect for 2021 by the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association, RTEPSA. Her fellow Tepsa members elected her earlier this year to the position in which she will support the organization's goal of empowering educational leaders to learn with and from each other. Regional officers help support area members, work to grow the organization, and represent their region at the state level. Next year, our very own Latoya Patterson will begin a term serving as Region Four President for the 2122 year. Tepsa currently has relatively few assistant principals serving on its board. Ms. Patterson's election is especially impressive. Her own achievements, together with her dedicated work and support of her professional colleagues, has set her apart. A 2015 Spring ISD Elementary Teacher of the Year and a finalist for Region Four Teacher of the Year, Ms. Patterson herself grew up in Spring ISD schools. She attended Hirsch Elementary, Twin Creeks Middle School, and Spring High School. She taught in Spring ISD both at Decane High School in Anderson before becoming Anderson's Assistant Principal in 2017. The district is proud to have her as a homegrown leader, and we're excited to celebrate her this evening as she represents Region Four educators at the state level with Tepsa. Congratulations, Ms. Patterson. And we have your little award here, which we will get to you and get a photo op for Spring Board, and we are super, super excited for your award. And if you'd like to give a few words about this organization and this honor, we'd love to hear from you.
I thank you for your wonderful words. I am humbled. I am honored to represent this wonderful district at the state level as the Region Four President-elect. Thank you to my husband Joe Patterson for always supporting me and to my wonderful principal Kristen Falcon, who has inspired leadership within me and who is always there to support me. So, Tepsa's a great organization. We want to encourage membership throughout Spring ISD. So I want to encourage all of our administrators to get involved so that we can help further the mission of Spring ISD.
Thank you so much, and I don't know if any of our board members or Dr. Watson, and I wasn't sure of Principal Falcon. I thought I saw her earlier, but then I didn't see her a minute ago. If Principal Falcon's participating, we'd love to hear from her too as well.
I'm here. I was kicked off and I came back.
There you go. I was wondering. I was like, where is she? Where is she?
Yes, thank you for saving me back just in time. I would love to say a few things. You already said some wonderful things about Ms. Patterson. I would love to jump on that train with you. Ms. Patterson is an amazing administrator. She exemplifies leadership in all aspects of the word. She's a problem solver. Anytime she sees anything that's not working well, by the time she brings it to me, she's already started brainstorming what the solution will be. She's a hard worker. She's organized. But what I love most about Ms. Patterson is every decision she makes, she's got what's best for kids in her heart. So I know she'll be a principal really soon, and I won't be able to work with her anymore. And I'll be so excited, but a little sad because she's an amazing educator, and I consider her a dear friend, and I'm really, really proud of her.
Thank you. And if anybody doesn't know, Ms. Patterson has also participated on a lot of really important committees for the district. That's how I met Ms. Patterson. She helped us both with our bond and our boundary and really was great on our stakeholder input, representing campus. And at that time, teacher input, we appreciate all the insight she's been able to give us over the years on important projects. So I do want to compliment that leadership shine. Several years back, I got to see that leadership shine at the district level. I don't know if there's any other board members or Dr. Watson, any words of congratulations?
I'll chime in with congratulations for Ms. Patterson and say how proud we are and how inspired I am by your service and your commitment to Spring ISD. I love hearing that students go through our system and come back and serve as teachers and administrators. So again, congratulations and thank you for all your work.
I too want to echo that. I first met Ms. Patterson while she was serving on one of the committees as a teacher, and as soon as I heard her speak and saw her interact with people on that committee, I said, who is she? She is definitely going to be an administrator one day. And so I just wish you congratulations for all of your hard work. It's not anything different than what we see with you every day showing leadership. So once again, thank you so much, and we wish you the best.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Patterson.
Echo that, Ms. DunOville. She's going to get a lot of praises. We are very, very happy for you, Ms. Patterson. And I want to say that I am going to be spreading the word. So look forward to the word going out. Congratulations, Ms. Patterson.
Congratulations, and I know these awards are a little awkward with the Zoom meeting, but if we could a few of us unmute for a second and just one little round of applause for Ms. Patterson, then we will go on to our next point of pride. Again, congratulations, Ms. Patterson.
On it, in that I've worked with Ms. Patterson on the campus. We recently did an event where we were registering people to vote last year, and I was so impressed, not with just the students that came up to her, but how many parents stopped, you know, and looked to her for direction and leadership. And I was very impressed when I was on the campus with her and how she took the time for every single person, you know, to answer their questions and give them the direction. And I too also want to say congratulations, Ms. Patterson.
Very well deserved. So we are going to now move on to our second point of pride, and I'm going to hold this one up. And I don't think on the camera, but this is not the same one I held up a second ago. This is actually our second point of pride. And this evening, this point of pride will be going to recognize Spring Early College Academy was recently named a winner of the 2020 College Success Award by GreatSchools.org. The College Success Award, first given in 2018, honors schools with a proven record of ensuring their students prepare for college, enroll in college, and succeed once they get there. I'm going to ask Principal Gidry to give a little wave before I read the rest of all of the comments related to this award. Did everybody see? Yes? So this year, Early College Academy was one of 2,158 award-winning schools from 29 states that met the award criteria. Schools whose students go on to enroll in two- or four-year colleges prove they are ready for college-level coursework and persist on to at least their second year. Early College was among just 314 winning schools in Texas this year, joining a group of schools across the state with an average graduation rate of 98% or above and with 70% or more of graduates going on to enroll in two- or four-year colleges and universities within 12 months of graduation. The GreatSchools.org website lists Spring Early College Academy as being far above the state average in key measures of college and career readiness, also noting that alumni from the school require less remedial college coursework on average than students nationwide. This award wasn't something that the school applied for. It's just a recognition for the hard work of the teachers and administrators and how that hard work is paying off for the students. Spring Early College has consistently proved itself a strong choice for area families. As many of you know, I hope everyone here knows, just a few months ago, it was again named a best high school in the annual U.S. News and World Report rankings. Congratulations to Principal Christine Gidry and her entire staff for earning this award. It's one more reminder of the wonderful work being done on behalf of students at this school. So a big round of applause for them, for Early College. And I know we have Ms. Gidry on here, and this is a new award. And if you want to talk a little bit about it and what it means for your campus, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Watson, President Newhouse, and Board of Trustees, I would just want to say thank you for taking the opportunity to recognize the receipt of this award and to recognize the hard work because it represents a collective effort of everyone involved, including our students, our staff, and the the board's continued support of this program and the belief and work that's been put into growing us into now our 10th year in our 10th year of existence. Our program continues to grow, and this award just represents the hard work that continues to show the student academic growth. At 86%, last year, we had 86% of our students that earned an associate's degree. And we continue to work to improve on that each and every year. And again, that comes from the support behind that the board gives to us and the unwavering support of the parents and student, excuse me, student work that they commit to in joining our program. We are in our week of showcase meetings and all of the opportunities that students have in our district, which continues to grow. We encourage, you know, parents and students to look at all of the programs that are available that the board continues to offer and support. So thank you, Board, for that, for your continued support of increasing opportunities for students.
Thank you. Any of the board members or Dr. Watson, but a big round of applause for Early College.
Just want to say a very special thank you to you again, Christine. You know, having had a few conversations with you regarding your transition back to Early College, it has definitely been a sweet spot for you and the students. It's quite interesting, over the year or two that you were away, when Dr. Hill and I were meeting with the kids, all they asked for was, can we get Ms. Gidry? Can Ms. Gidry come back? So thank you so much for your leadership at the school and all that you've been able to do for its transition from the T buildings over at South Ridge all the way to Lone Star. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Watson.
I'd like to add my congratulations. It amazes me that you've gone through three major moves of your high school and maintained your excellence in academic standards throughout that. I will tell you, I get an inside view because my granddaughter is a student at that school, and I will tell you that you continue to have that wonderful supportive culture among the students. I remember sometimes high school being full of a lot of drama and cliques and things like that, and that's not what I'm hearing from your school. And it goes between different grade levels that students reach out to other students to help them. Just congratulations on a wonderful, wonderful institution that you are leading.
Thank you, and congratulations again to Spring Early College Academy. We really appreciate you being here, and it's lovely to have all of those awards for us to announce to our community. So we have lots for Spring Early College Academy, and we're super happy to have you here, Principal Gidry. Thank you. So our last one, so we've had a lot of point of prides, and you know, over the last several months, even during the pandemic and with the virtual meetings, we've had lots of point of prides. It's a really good thing to have lots of point of prides because as you guys know, we vet the point of prides really closely, and they have to be state, very high-level state recognitions or national recognitions to qualify for a point of pride. But we do have very exclusive our ABCD awards. So it's a good thing that we have lots of point of prides on our board meetings. But as a district, we really are very exclusive, and we reserve our ABCD awards, the above and beyond the call of duty and the service to the district. We reserve those, and we only issue, as you know, a few a year. And tonight, we have a very deserving partner that we are issuing an ABCD award. Looks a little different than the point of pride. It's a little larger, and I'm going to hold that up, which will be given to our recipient. So this evening, we are issuing Spring ISDs Above and Beyond the Call of Duty Award. Issue just a few of these a year. We are issuing it to Caravan and Caravan Lead Nurse Alejandra Leal. They have long been friends to Spring ISD and supporters of our district family. This year especially, we are grateful for their efforts to keep students healthy and ready to learn. At this time, I'd like to hand off the presentation to our Director of Parent Engagement, Trinita Carroll. She has worked very closely with Caravan in the support of our students and families, and I wanted her to be here tonight to talk about this relationship and what it's meant to the district. So with that, I'll pass the floor over to Ms. Carroll to actually talk about and present the award to the lead nurse of Caravan, Alejandra Leal.
Thank you, Ms. DunOville. Good evening, President Newhouse, members of the Board of Trustees, and Dr. Watson. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize such a longstanding community partner. Alejandra Leal and the Texas Caravan Program have supported the students and families in our district for well over seven years. What started as a simple conversation between Mrs. Leal and Jeanne Parker, our Director of Nursing, during a break at a meeting has blossomed into years of serving our families. Mrs. Leal, who serves as the lead nurse for Caravan, has participated in various events that support our families. She draws a huge crowd at our annual Back to School Expo, where she was always the last person to leave because she wanted to make sure every child received their immunizations. She also travels to multiple campuses throughout the year to catch any student who didn't participate in the expo. She has truly made children's health her ministry. This year, due to COVID-19, we were not able to host our annual expo, but it was important that we still help to maintain the health of our students. We had a difficult time finding an agency who was willing to provide the face-to-face interaction needed to immunize students. Mrs. Leal, once again, answered the call and provided not one, but three immunization fairs for our students. We have been incredibly blessed to serve thousands of students each year. This year, in addition to providing free immunizations, Caravan is also providing free flu shots for our families. Beginning tomorrow, families can, family members from six months old can visit our Community Engagement Center and get their flu shots for free thanks to the generosity of Nurse Leal and her team. I am thankful to be able to recognize Nurse Leal and the Texas Caravan Program this evening for all that they've done for our students and for our families. Now, we submitted this board item three weeks ago. Little did we know that three weeks later, Nurse Leal would be announcing her retirement. So this is quite fitting that the last few weeks that she's still working before her retirement, we get to recognize you. And so I am just overly honored to be able to recognize you right before your retirement. Nurse Leal, we truly appreciate everything that you have done for our students. We appreciate everything that Caravan has done for our students. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And would you like to say a few words at this time?
Yes, it's been an honor serving the children of Spring ISD. Ms. Jeanne Parker brought me there, and then I got to meet you. So it's been an honor just to work with the children and make sure they're immunized and ready for school. And this is all about the children. It's nothing about me. It's all about the children, and that's what we work for. We work very hard to keep them in school and make sure they're healthy and safe from these terrible diseases out there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we are going to get your plaque to you tomorrow, and we congratulate you on your retirement too as well.
Very well deserved, and we're excited for you for that. So congratulations. This is a really big deal in the district.
We give out very few of these, and this means a lot to us. So we're so happy you're being awarded this.
I understand.
Thank you. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening. I appreciate everyone being here. I know it's not the same virtually, but it's important that we keep up these traditions, and I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. DunOville, for those presentations. We are so very proud of each one of our recipients tonight. So congratulations to all three of them. And Ms. Leal, we wish you the best that Spring can send to you on your retirement. We appreciate it, but we hate to see you leave, but we wish you the best on your retirement. Our next item on the agenda is Agenda Participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Brinkley, do we have anyone ready to speak under Agenda Participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. Then we will continue. Our next item is the Public Hearing for the Spring Independent School District 2020-2021 Targeted Improvement Plan. So at this time, I would like to recognize our Executive Chief of District Operations, Mark Miranda.
Thank you, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, members of the board. As Dr. Watson mentioned in his opening, last week, we presented an overview of the 21 campuses that have developed targeted improvement plans for the 2020-2021 school year. Tonight, we are here for the required public hearing and approval of those 2020-2021 targeted improvement plans.
Thank you. Mr. Brinkley, do we have anyone registered to speak on this agenda under public hearing?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the Spring Independent School District's 2020-2021 Targeted Improvement Plans as presented by the administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the Spring Independent School District 2020-2021 Targeted Improvement Plans as presented by the administration.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved by Winford Adams and second by Deborah Jensen that the Board of Trustees approve the Spring Independent School District's 2020-2021 Targeted Improvement Plans as presented by the administration. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. So for our next item, I'd like to recognize So for our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrook.
Thank you, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson and members of the board. This evening, we have our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020, and our Independent Auditors Report. And as you know, all school districts in the state of Texas are required to have an independent audit of their financial operations conducted by a certified public accounting firm. And so, of course, that audit took place at both interim and at our year-end, all virtually this year. And we have with us this evening, Ms. Selena Sarastaras, who is the Audit Partner with Whitley Penn, and I'd like to ask her to come forward and give the report from the auditors. And following her presentation, then we'll take a moment to look through the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. President Newhouse, members of the board and Dr. Watson, I'm pleased to present the results of the fiscal year 2020 Audit Results and I'm trying to share my screen here and hopefully you all can see that here momentarily. Okay. So, but as Ms. Westbrook's indicated, we did begin our audit in early spring. Actually, right after the shutdown, our engagement team, as shown here on this slide, began working remotely. Eileen Comple Macalinto was the manager and so she worked with your management team from the beginning. Brooke Fuller and Griselda Soto also assisted her with the audit, but Eileen did all the heavy lifting and worked with your management team. We do want to thank Ms. Westbrook, Mary Welch and all of her team for assisting us in providing us with all of the documentation that was needed. It was very difficult to provide us things digitally that were customarily provided in hard copy. But again, it was, it was all of their effort that allowed us to issue this report on time. Some districts are not, June 30th year ends are not making that deadline or have chosen to use the waiver, but your, your management team pushed through and made the deadline. I am the engagement partner, but there was also a second partner that provided a concurring or engagement quality control review behind the scenes, but I worked with your management team as well. The purpose of our audit was to issue an opinion and so the worst type of opinion that any entity can receive is a disclaimer. The, the second type is a qualification. That's due to not following generally accepted accounting principles or a scope limitation where certain information was not available for us to gain comfort with the figures presented in your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And the third and best type of opinion that an entity can earn is a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion. And the reason I say earn is because it is a process that requires districts or any entity to earn this type of opinion. You have received an unmodified opinion for many, many years, but it does take a lot to get there. The process started with our risk assessment interviewing your management team, identifying turnover or any changes in controls. Of course, with the pandemic, we had to evaluate the controls pre-COVID-19 and during the pandemic to see how we had to tweak our tested controls. We identified the key controls over various areas that I'll discuss here momentarily. Once we identified those key controls, we tested the controls and that was to allow us to reduce the risk of material misstatement or to be able to say that the, the risk of material misstatement is reduced. Finally, after the district closed its books after June 30th, 2020, we performed our substantive testing, which includes corroborating, confirming and vouching and inquiry as well, and all in an effort to issue an opinion that I discussed earlier. I'm pleased to report that Spring ISD earned an unmodified opinion again. There were no internal control findings related to financial reporting, nor were there any findings related to compliance. There were no issues to report in a letter to those charged with, with governance. So, so again, a clean audit report. There are some spending requirements that many school districts are, are struggling to spend, but your, your underspending was very minimal and Ms. Westbrook's can touch on that when she gets to, to the actual financial numbers. But nothing, we have nothing to report that belongs in the single audit report, that which goes to the Texas Education Agency and that which goes to the Federal Audit Clearing House where all federal agencies review this. Speaking of federal agencies, because you do spend more than $750,000 in federal funding, you're required to undergo a single audit. Every year, we perform a risk assessment and we select federal programs for testing. There's Type A programs that are the larger programs that have to be tested every third year. So we do a two-year look back and if it has not, if those large programs have not been tested in the last two years, they must be tested. There are also smaller programs called Type B programs and those replace the larger programs that are taking a break, so to speak. This year, the Special Education Cluster, which is your idea of B formula and preschool, were tested as major in addition to the 21st Century Grant Title IV Part A and then, of course, the new CARES Act or the ESAR Grant that came about late in, in, right before your fiscal year ended, which was a part of your state funding in the form of federal funding. And so that had to be treated as a federal grant and we tested compliance, given the grant application as the district completed it. We are issuing an unmodified opinion over these federal programs and again, we didn't identify any internal control or compliance findings. I find it refreshing to work with school districts such as Spring ISD that they want to keep everything above board. They don't even want to be in the gray zone and I appreciate that as an auditor because they want to make sure there, there, there isn't even a perception that something may be in the gray area. So I appreciate that documentation is always provided and, and questions are asked throughout the year and we have a great working relationship. Sometimes, you know, we, we get questions on allowability or, or our, our feedback and again, it's refreshing when the answer is no. We provide feedback as to why the answer is no, whether TASBO, the Texas Education Agency, has indicated the answer is no and your management team is receptive for that. So I thank them for that. I'd mentioned earlier that we identified key controls over critical areas and this is just to give you an idea of what we consider critical. So of course, you have your HR and payroll departments and the majority of your expenditures and all funds are made up of payroll costs, except for capital projects funds, of course. The tax office, because you do collect your own taxes, it is, it poses higher risk, which requires us to test those controls. Again, no issues to note there. Procurement and accounts payable is a, an area where we have to test controls just because the volume of transactions is quite significant and then information technology feeds all of these areas that we're discussing. Other significant revenue sources include your child nutrition revenues that are collected and that were collected onsite. And then attendance changes are also important because if the controls over changes, if a student is marked as absent and changed to present during the attendance, the official attendance period, which counts towards state aid, then we will have trouble relying on the inputs that drive the state aid figures. Again, no issues to report. And finally, financial closer reporting is the overarching area that drives the, the numbers that are presented in your Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So kudos to your management and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, if there are no questions, then we will move on to the presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Selena, if you could unshare your screen. Thank you. And so just really quickly to speak on a point that was made about the compliance spending. You have a yellow folder that has some documents in it and one of those documents is a management letter. And so what, what she was referring to with the spending requirements is that we did have two of our special populations that were underspent this year. And what that means is, is TA gives us, or based upon our student population and our weighted average daily attendance, we're allocated a specific amount of funding for the special populations and we're required to spend a percentage of that on that specific program. And so in some, in, for example, with the, the two that we had underspending in this year was in Career and Technology and in the new College Career and Military Readiness, the CCMR. And so that's listed in the management letter that you all have a copy of and you also have a copy of Management's Response. With CTE, there was a, quite a large change in how funding was allocated as a part of House Bill III and there was more funds allocated for more courses, namely courses at the middle school level. And so there was a lot of changes that needed to happen with coding with our courses in order to ensure that we've maximized that funding. And so in the middle of 2019-20, we had a changeover in our Director of Data Management and Compliance and we hired a new director around March. Matter of fact, she started the week before the pandemic. So she has been trained on the job nonetheless. And so one of the first projects that she undertook was to do an in-depth review of the course, the course coding and was able to find quite a few courses that needed to be coded as CTE that weren't or the level of CTE coding needed to be updated. And that resulted in us quite a bit more of CTE funding that we were able to receive for 2019-20, but the timing of that review and the timing of the acknowledgement of those funds didn't allow us an opportunity to actually spend those funds. And so that's where you see the underspent amount for CTE for 1920. And then for the CCMR, it was a very small amount, it was about $12,000. And so we had worked quite a bit with our research and accountability team on allowable expenditures. We feel as though we did really good, given it was the first year and we were all still learning that what's an allowable expenditure, et cetera. And so we've, we've moved some funds into easier areas for easier accessibility going into 2021 and we feel like we're on track to be in compliance with both of those areas. And I know later on, you will likely hear more about some of the changes to the CTE pathways that are forthcoming as well with the review that Mr. Miranda and Ms. Bradford and that team are, are spearheading going into the next year. And so there, I'm certain there'll be some opportunities that'll arise with CTE funding as we, as we, we move in that direction. So with that, I wanted to take us over to a look at the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which you have a binder at your stations for this year. And again, this is the actual expenditures and the actual financial results for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. And so if you'll start with me, just three pages into the document, so cover sheet, cover page and then the table of contents, so it's the third page. And there's, the document is quite large, it's very comprehensive. It covers anything and everything you would like to know about the operations of Spring ISD and what governs the way that we record our financial transactions. It's broken into three sections. There's the introductory section, which is the first, the first section, and it has general information about the district, our vision, our mission, our core values, how we allocate our dollars in order to meet the, the needs of our five-year strategic plan. And then, of course, there's a discussion about the local economy in which the school district operates in, which of course, has a significant impact on our revenue collections, our expenditures, et cetera. The next section is the financial section. And so this is, of course, the heart of the, of the report and it includes the, what's called the Management's Discussion and Analysis Section that we refer to as the M D N A. That's the section where there's narratives and it talks about the why. So this happened, that happened, and this is why it happened. So lots of explanations behind the numbers and it's a liftable document. If you read it and then look at it and refer to the financial statements, it'll help make some things make more sense. The last section is the statistical section and that's where you see the trends, trends that have happened. In most cases, you're going to see 10 years' worth of data. So long as all of the 10 years of data is available, then that's what you'll see in that section. And so that, the trend data is very interesting to look at because what it'll show you is that there's almost no two years that are alike. There's always something happening, whether there's a hurricane, we've gone through a recession and property values dropped and then they flattened and then they went up. You see the story of what's taken place over the last decade. And so that's, that's the makeup of the, the CAFR. But what I'd like to show is just a few of the statements and if you'll turn with me, beginning on page 31. So page 31 is the Statement of Net Position. And so there's two different types of financial statements that are included here. We have the government-wide financial statements and then we have the governmental fund financial statements. The first two that we'll look at, starting here with the Statement of Net Position, is government-wide. And what that means is, is it's a broad overview that's similar to a private sector appearance for financial statements. And it's, it's long-term, it includes our bonds payable that we have that we won't pay for the next 15, 20 years. It includes, expense, or excuse me, and includes things that are very long-term and are for our future and it lets you know overall what the district's position is, but not necessarily those short-term liquid things that you see on the governmental fund financial statements. So that's really the difference between the government-wide and the governmental. And so the first one here is Exhibit A1 and it is, again, government-wide, long-term assets and liabilities. And you can see our total assets was the $1.1 billion, including our, with our total deferred outflows of resources at 90.7 million, total liabilities of 1.1 billion and total deferred inflows of resources of 85.6 million, with the resulting net position of a negative 19 million. Now, what I want to say is when you hear net position and you hear negative, it doesn't go together very well. And so that's because several years back, there was a significant change to the reporting for school districts related to teachers' retirement system and what's referred to as teacher retirement system, the TRS care. And so the districts are now required to report the district's proportionate share of TRS and TRS care. And so those two items and the inflows and outflows and the liabilities have a significant impact on the district's total net position. And so just to bring your attention to those numbers, the net pension liability right in the middle of the page is at 114.6 million. And again, that's the district's proportionate share of the state's total plan and that has an impact on the district's net position. So if you're ready and we can turn to Exhibit A2, which is again, another government-wide financial statement, that is our Statement of Activities. And here we see our expenditures and our revenues. And this is again, another statement that gives you that look with the private sector type setup. And so we see all of our expenditures, if you read from left to right on the page, starting with the functions and programs, you can see our government-wide expenditures broken down by function and function just means what area of the district are we servicing? What type of expenditure is it? So if it's instruction, you see instruction, which of course, is where the, the majority of our, of our expenditures are, rightfully so. So our expenditures for instruction was the 243.6 million. And if you go over to the next item, it's the charges for services. So that column are the revenues that were generated because there was a service that was provided. And so you can see we had 243.6 million in expenditures and 1.6 million in, in charges for services. And charges for services are things like athletics, rental, rental of our facilities, child nutrition, food sales, those sorts of things. The next column is operating grants and contributions, so grants, that's self-explanatory. So the offsetting expenditures, charges for certain, net of charges. So the offsetting expenditures, charges for certain, net of charges of services and net of operating grants and contributions. You can see the net expense for instruction is a hundred and ninety-five point three million. So if you follow that all the way down, it's three hundred and seventy-seven million. And so all that says is we had our total expenditures, we charged for services, we received some operating grants. And so then we have these expenditures that still need to be covered. And that's where our property tax revenue and our state aid comes into play. And you see that under the general revenue category. And so, and of course, it reconciles back to our net position of that negative nineteen million. When it's offset with the revenues and expenditures. So those are the two government-wide financial statements. And if we move to page thirty-three, these are our governmental funds. And so these are our more short-term liquid, when we're making decisions about what funds are available for expenditures that are happening now. Happening over the next year, happening over the next few months. We're talking about these fun level financial statements. And so just to read again from left to right, the fun types at the top. General fund, we know most of the time when we're talking about the budget, we're talking about general fund. That's the chief operating fund for the district. The next one is the debt service fund. And of course, that's the fund that we collect the interest and sinking portion of our tax rate to support our bond payments. For principal and interest payments. Capital projects fund is our fund for our bond program and our ex, um, capital expenditures that have been allocated for that purpose. We do have some that are non-bond related. So that's what's happening there. And then the next column is, you heard um Ms. Sarah Sarris mention the ESAR fund. And that's the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. And that was a part of the CARES Act that was passed earlier this year. And what it is, is it took a portion of the district's state funding and it was funded by a federal fund. And so if you want to see the true full operations for general fund for the year. You would add the general fund and ESAR together. So basically, it just took state funding that was allocated to Spring ISD. And it was just funded between the general fund, state aid and the federal fund, the ESAR fund. So that's what that is. Our allocation was just equally offset. We were able to move expenditures from general fund over to the ESAR fund and um fully, fully um maximize those funds. Then the last column, the non-major other governmental funds, that is where you see funds such as Title One. Idea B, which is our federal program that supports our special education program, child nutrition. Those funds are included in that non-major other governmental funds. And so this is the balance sheet that shows us our total assets, our total liabilities. We have some deferred inflows of resources and then the net resulting um fund balances. So just to look at the fund balances really quickly because it's, it's identified here, but we'll talk more about. Fund balances and operations on the next statement. So we have the different categories of the fund balance. So if you're at the bottom quarter of the page where it says fund balances, you see the first item is non-spendable. So that's items like inventory. So we purchase items that we stock in our warehouse. They're in inventory until we pull them from the warehouse and we utilize them, consume them, then we expense those items. So until they're pooled and used and expensed, they're in inventory. We have prepaid items. That is primarily our property insurance. And so we have an, an April renewal date and of course, our fiscal year end is June. So for the twenty twenty fiscal year, then only April, May and June are expensed here. And then we prepay um the nine months that are going to go into the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two um fiscal year. Excuse me, twenty, twenty, twenty-one uh fiscal year. And of course, the next category is restricted. So those are our funds that we have that have external limitations and restrictions on them. We know that our grant funds can only be used for the purpose for which they were, they were provided to us. Capital projects can only be used for capital projects and of course, debt service for debt service. Committed funds, the Board of Trustees has the authority and are the only ones that have the authority to commit. Fund balance, a portion of fund balance. And so what you see here is we have, you committed the school activity funds that our students fundraised for. That those funds would only be used for school activity funds. So that's under the committed. And then, of course, we have still our commitment for the strategic compensation plan of five million dollars. The assigned portion of the fund balance is where policy provides Dr. Watson, the superintendent, and myself as CFO. The ability to assign a portion of fund balance. And what we do there is, is we assign primarily for sustainability and um cash flow purposes. And specifically this year, we're setting aside a portion of fund balance for natural reasons. Because we're having to use it for COVID nineteen expenditures as they arise. And then the last item is the unassigned portion of fund balance, which just means it's not included in any of the other categories that we just spoke about. What we anticipate, and we won't get into this much this evening, but it will be a discussion that we'll have. Is we anticipate when the legislative session begins in January, that we may start hearing more about districts' fund balances. And how those fund balances should be used and so on and so forth. That tends to happen when we find ourselves in tight budget environments. So I wanted to take the time to walk you through the fund balance components. So that um we know what, what portion of the fund balance is being discussed when we start hearing those things uh come up at a later date. Okay, the next schedule that we want to look at is on page thirty-five. And this is.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
We don't need to do it now, but can we see later what we've assigned? Everything signed portion?
Yes, yes ma'am. Actually, you can, you can take a look at that. It's on page forty-seven.
It's unusual times and I just wanted to make sure you know.
Yes, ma'am. It's on page forty-seven. And it shows the general fund assigned fund balance. And the first portion of that is the encumbrances for um education supplies and projects. And we talked about that at um the Thursday evenings meeting when we talked about the roll forward of the devices. And then the long section that has a very long description here is related to COVID nineteen. And so this is just setting aside funds for unforeseen, unable to forecast expenditures. And then, of course, the last portion is the maintain sufficient cash flow. And that has been a portion of our assigned fund balance um for as long as we've had assigned fund balances. Just to ensure that we're setting aside a portion to, to weather storms like what we're going through right now. Um, so that's our assigned fund balance of that forty-five point six. Ma'am.
Have we had conversations around increasing that?
No, we, we haven't. Um, but we can certainly, we can certainly have that discussion. So that we can assign a bigger portion for um the next, the next year.
Thank you. I'm just with, with COVID and a lot of things that are happening, especially with our legis, you know, from legislators and. Unfunded mandates, it just may be a good opportunity for us to uh make sure that we are being uh fiscally responsible. And setting aside a true picture of what we may need based on the atmosphere of our in uh environment right now.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Was that my time bell, Jeremy? Okay, then we'll move to page thirty-five, which is the statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance. So again. I'm seeing a couple of thumbs up. Am I okay to proceed or do I need to pause? Oh, we don't, you can't hear me. Okay. So we are having technical difficulties at the moment. So if you could stand by as we work through these technical difficulties and we will resume the meeting shortly. Okay, so if everyone can turn with me to page thirty-five, which is uh the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance. And we'll look at the revenues and expenditures and fund balance changes in each one of the fund types. And so for general fund, we had a total revenues of three hundred and seventeen point four million. Total expenditures of three hundred and ten million. So the revenues over expenditures was seven point one million. But we did have, if you recall, we passed a balanced budget for twenty nineteen twenty. But we also came back and did some one-time expenditures, committed to some one-time expenditures. For example, um, some additional dollars allocated to the Westfield Ninth Grade Center completion. The Spring High School pool and then um lift-six furniture. Those were some of the big-ticket items. And so you'll see a transfer of ten million, three hundred and eighty thousand that's coming out of general fund. Ten million of that is going over to capital projects for the projects that were just mentioned. And then three hundred and eighty-six-ten went over to the non-governmental, or excuse me, non-major governmental funds. And that was to child nutrition to offset the cost for premium pay. We know that our child nutrition workers were providing curbside service all throughout the pandemic when we were closed. And we were paying premium pay. And so the general fund picked up that cost uh for child nutrition to help offset. The difficult year that the Child Nutrition Fund was having. So with that transfer out, the net change in fund balance for general fund was a um negative three point one million. So again, originally planned for over twenty million of one-time expenditures. But ended with a net change of um just three, three million. So the resulting fund balance in general fund is one twenty-two point seven million. And that represents thirty-nine point six percent of our expenditures and just shy of five months um of expenditures. That's in, that the fund balance mix-up. With the debt service fund, we have total revenues of sixty-six point six million. Expenditures of sixty-four point seven million. And we did have the twenty twenty bond refunding, current refunding that we had this year. So you see under other financing uses and sources, we see the refunding bonds issued, the premium, and then of course, the payment to escrow. So the net changes in the debt service fund was an increase of two point two million with the resulting fund balance of sixty-eight point four. In capital projects, we had two point four million in revenue. And a hundred and thirty-one point four in expenditures. We had the transfer in for our non-bond capital projects, again, for the projects that were mentioned. We also had the sale of land this year where we sold some land over by Imperial Valley. And since those uh, that property was purchased with bond funds, then the proceeds go here into the capital projects fund. So with all of those items, the change in fund balance was just shy of one hundred and seventeen million. And of course, that's expenditures related to the twenty sixteen bond program as those um projects are coming to a close. And so our fund balance in capital projects is fifty-seven point four million. The ESAR fund that we spoke on earlier, total revenues of nine point two million. Equal offsetting expenditures of nine point two million, no resulting fund balance. And with our non-major other governmental funds, we had revenues of five, fifty-two point five million. Expenditures of fifty-five point one million. And then um a decrease of expenditures exceeded revenues by two point five million. And that is largely made up of um the decrease in fund balance for the Child Nutrition Fund. Which is um while we've had the conversation about helping offset some of the costs related to premium pay. And keeping a watchful eye on operations in the twenty twenty-one year to make sure that we continue to keep the child nutrition plan whole. And as you know, they are very self-sustaining um fund and is very well, well-taken care of, always has been very efficient with their operations. They're just weathering the COVID storm like all of us are. And so the net fund balance is a total of four point one million in the non-major other governmental funds. And so as mentioned, there's a lot of additional information, including the statistical section that has the trend data in there. Um, notes to the financial statements that give even more context to the numbers and the, the changes that are happening throughout the document. But those are the, the meat financial statements that I wanted to make sure that we took a moment to pause. And review the financial operations for the closeout of the twenty nineteen twenty financial fiscal year.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Madam President, that is the end of my item. If there are no further questions from the board.
Do we have any questions? Do we have any questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Mrs. Westbrook. We have a nice little notebook here that we will take time and kind of digest a little more. But you've done a very nice job in explaining to us what we specifically we need to be looking at. So thank you for your report. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the comprehensive annual financial report. For the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty and the independent auditors report. Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the comprehensive annual financial report. For the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty and the independent auditors report. Do I have a second? It's been moved by Deborah Jensen and seconded by Kelly Hodges that the Board of Trustees approve the comprehensive annual financial report. For the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty and the independent auditors report. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Uh, Madam President, I'd like to thank um Ms. Westbrook and her team uh putting together the CAFER. It is a lot of hard work and I know they've been putting in a lot of hours and preparing it. And she did such an amazing job in walking us through it that we didn't even have any questions. So just want to thank her for all of her continued efficiency in how she is uh managing the finances of the district. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you so very much. Our next item is a discussion of the legislative agenda. So at this time, I'd like to recognize trustee and Board Governance Committee Lead, uh Justine Durant.
Thank you. President Newhouse, um, I'd like to, we've got a couple of items on the Governance Committee. Um, Dr. Jensen is going to walk us through our proposed legislative priorities to the board for the upcoming school year. And so we'll start with um that agenda item first.
I do not have a screen to share with you because I'm on the district's machine, but I do have handouts. Tazby uh, you know, has a legislative committee and representatives from districts across. TASB, you know, has a legislative committee and representatives from districts across Texas. And they propose priorities beginning partway through the school year. And then we join and we argue these things and we wordsmith and we come up with what we like. And then it goes through some other TASB committees that further smooth things out. So TASB has come up with quite a list of legislative priorities that I have shared with you in the past. The Governance Committee has discussed and come up with the top ones here. In our Lone Star Training, it has been stressed that it is better to have three to five goals so that you're not trying to scatter your efforts and resources. So that's why we don't automatically just take all of TASB's priorities as our own. And here's the winners, ding ding ding. The COVID-19 pandemic. Madam Chairman, Justine Durant, do you want me to read these things?
The top five?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We'd like to bring it to the board for consensus of their approval.
I'll try to be.
As a recommendation.
Okay, I will try to be quick here. This one's a long one. "TASB calls upon the Texas Legislature to continue working with local school districts to identify and address student needs during and after the COVID-19 pandemic and other disasters, such as access to technology and broadband utility services, mental health resources, meals, social services, personal protective equipment, additional support for economically disadvantaged children, and remediation for students while maintaining local control. The state should also suspend accountability ratings during disasters that severely impact school operations, such as the current pandemic. Enact a temporary moratorium on the expansion of creation of new charter schools, not supplant. State education funding with federal funds provided for disaster recovery, and fund schools based on student enrollment to ensure adequate instructional continuity." I think that list there speaks for itself. For those of you who are not familiar with supplanting funding versus supplementing funding, let's say I have a income in my school district of $200,000. And I am supposed to get a $100,000 grant. Well, I'm not supposed to use that $100,000 to spend on things I was already spending my $200,000 on. It should be extra money. So that's what they're saying here is it should be extra money, not, it shouldn't be replacing what we're already spending.
So we're proposing that the school finance legislative priority be in our top five?
Yes, and it's all to do with the COVID pandemic. Charter schools is the next priority. "TASB calls upon the Texas Legislature to prohibit the expansion of charter schools, to reduce the impact charter schools have on the state budget and on local school, public schools, and to increase the transparency of charter schools and their operators, especially with regard to enrollment and expulsion practices, business operations, and expenditures. The state should require charters to have publicly elected board members who are accountable to the communities they serve." Would someone like to speak on charter schools here? Mr. Adams, are you allowed to? Or is your job kind of prohibits you from?
No, I mean, I can, I can speak to the issue.
Some of these problems we face with charter schools.
Absolutely. Charter schools, in our view, do not have sufficient oversight at the governance level. And so that has led to some, some issues and some problems. And we just, I just think that everybody should be playing by the same rules in, in terms of, you know, oversight and transparency.
My comments are, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
My comments are, we just had a conversation a couple of days ago with the TASB Legislative Committee. We was talking about the fact that they're not held accountable. They are held accountable different standards. And I thought I'm some kind of horse. Can y'all hear me? Can y'all hear me? You guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Those reports I had a few months ago that I think I forward to everyone, Dr. J, I think I forward to you about how we mentioned up to charter schools. And it was, it was an in-depth report about where we stand at as public schools, well, and conversant to our charter schools. And we're, and we're outperforming them what we do in all categories. So they're not held accountable to the same standards and no one is really pushing them to be held accountable. The Strategic Committee feel like they should be held accountable just like the regular schools, districts. So that's our main concern.
And not only are they not.
Thank you.
Not only are they not held to the same accountability as we, as public schools are, their funding is different than what we receive when they get two to three times the money we get per student. And we think it should be more equitable.
Also, they get taxpayer money for advertising budget that we don't get. I also, I've seen figures for local charter schools where they spend far much more on their administration and less on their teachers than we do. There's item after item that we go ahead, but that will be part of our legislative activity. The next priority that TASB has that we definitely would like, and that's diversity and cultural awareness. "TASB calls upon the Texas Legislature to support diversity and cultural awareness initiatives throughout districts, through staff and student education, and restorative teaching and disciplinary practices that treat all students with equality." All right. The next one.
May I comment on that one?
Yes, certainly.
I have to because I wanted to quote off of that one. And Dr. Jensen was on the Legislative Committee. We met back in June. And originally, we only had nine priorities. And at the end of the meeting, I guess around the end of the meeting, Dr. J, we, someone, a school member from Bryan ISD recommended that we should add that particular one. He knows it was the last one that was added, but the priority is much higher than that. Then went to our, went to the Assembly and, and we made a presentation at the Assembly and we got all support on it. So it's a top priority with the TASB. And I'm glad that we adopted it as part of one hours. So I greatly appreciate that.
And I think we've already started some work with that one in the district with our diversity committee that we just enacted, so.
Yes, so you could tie in with our internal priorities as well as our legislative priorities.
Yes, they align.
All right, the next one is governance. "TASB calls upon the Texas Legislature to recognize and preserve the right of public school boards to associate and collaborate with each other and to communicate the needs of their students and schools, both directly and through representative organizations with lawmakers." There have been efforts in the Texas Legislature to shut up school boards and, and cut us off from our Texas Association, the school boards, where we can really diagnose our own problems and how the state could help us. And we need to be heard. And some people don't want to hear from us. We want them to hear from us. All right, the next one is public school finance. "TASB calls upon the Texas Legislature to aggressively commit to maintain the promises and dedication of funding made in the new school finance system implemented under House Bill Three in the 86th session, and to equitably share the cost of education with local school districts. Further, the state should implement a funding structure that recognizes the flexibility needed by and additional costs incurred by school districts amid the COVID-19 pandemic." This is always an ongoing issue. And when I was viewing and listening to Anne's wonderful CAFRA report and trying to discern our assets and liabilities, and this is an ongoing thing. We're a huge business in the, why shouldn't I, what should I say instead of business? A huge entity in our community that hires and buys things. And the oversight to make sure that we are always honest and ethical and efficient in that is just awesome. And Ms. Westbrook's is just such an essential part of our thing. But we want the Texas Legislature to take their responsibility as well. And there were other ones here like teacher recruitment and retention. We did not choose that as one of our priorities because that was our priority. Last year, we've been working and have actually hired a study of our salary structure in our district and already going on that. So we thought these other, the five ones we have here are the ones we want. Now, Justine, do you want me to go lead right into the next one? That is not a TASB priority? Or do you want to vote on this? I could.
Whatever your preference.
Okay, I'm going to hand out.
So are there any objections to those top five priorities from any board members?
Justine Durant, first of all, like always, to thank CEO Committee for the hard work. And I greatly appreciate it. So tonight, once we approve our five, are these five me the one we told our legislators about our local legislators? Because I have a position to talk to all the legislators. But as far as our school board, I would, let's say there's several, so you're going to be the top five that we're pushing, right?
These are the.
We're not pushing, having a conversation with our legislators, right?
Correct. These are the five. And, and just like we did last year, we want to make these our priorities. We want to take them to our legislative representatives. We have a bill in mind that we would like for them to reconsider that was on the table during the last legislative session. So we're looking for our local legislators to help us support that bill. So absolutely, we have a lot of activities that we would like and tactics we'd like to take as a board. One of them in which kind of correlates with one of our priorities, and that is collaborating with the other school boards within the region four and coming together.
Right.
Their strength in numbers. And so if we can talk to our neighbors and work collaboratively with our other school board members to approach our legislations, legislators to make the changes that are in the best interest of our students and public education, I think that's something that we would like to move forward with as a body.
I think this also, what we're doing here recognizes that all of the TASB priorities are worthwhile, but certain of the priorities are more relevant to spring ISD. There are different regional priorities around the state between larger districts, smaller districts, rural districts, urban districts. So this is our attempt at making sure that the priorities of spring ISD are ready.
Correct. And so as your Governance Committee, we took a look at all of the recommended priorities and we're saying as a body, we felt these are the top five that impact.
Our students and our community the most. And we, we want your approval to move forward with these priorities. And I'll turn it back over to Acton.
Oh, I've, I've got a mic again. Good. I will be sharing a sheet of paper that the Governance Committee brought together to talk about how to approach your legislators in Texas and how to forward our priorities. Mr. Binkley, do you?
I heard that you said you were sharing the paper.
Oh.
We have them.
This is a little harder because it's. That's for Mr. Sorry. I decided to do these on separate sheets. That's for, that's for each of them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, so, so Dr. Jensen, before we move on with talking about how we want to go, our steps around these priorities, maybe we could have a motion to accept the five priorities presented to the body from the Governance Committee?
Thank you.
I'll give her a minute.
To our, would, would someone else like to make the motion?
Yeah. To our Board of Trustees, I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the five priorities for TASB, COVID-19 pandemic, charter schools, diversity and cultural awareness, governance, and public school finance.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees accept the five recommended, amended top legislative priorities from the Governance Committee for COVID-19 pandemic, charter schools, diversity and cultural awareness, governance, and public school financing for the night, for the 2020 and 2021 school year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Been moved by Justine Durant and seconded by Donald Davis that the Board accept the TASB agenda priorities of COVID-19 pandemic, charter schools, diversity and cultural awareness, governance, and public school finance. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Please continue.
Priorities accepted. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Jensen to talk about our next steps.
Okay. The next priority is one that we have developed as a school district ourselves. This priority actually went before TASB and the other school districts and did not receive enough widespread support to go forward as one of the overarching priorities. But we can still have it as our priority. And the need here we saw was that there is a need for a more robust description of prohibited criminal backgrounds in the qualifications for school boards. A bill did pass two years ago, and it is in your information here. It is Senate Bill Number 2283, and that eligibility for service by trustee convicted of certain offenses. A person is ineligible to serve as a member of the school, as of the Board of Trustees of a school district if the person has been convicted of a felony or an offense under Section 43.02 of the Penal Code. And that has to do with prostitution. All right. Our problem was if a person has been convicted of a felony. It turns out there's many, many, well, it seems like many to me ways a person can be guilty of a felony. One is to be convicted by a jury. One is to plead guilty. You can have deferred adjudication. There are different levels here. And if someone has committed a felony in their youth that really does not reflect them in their adulthood, apparently you can go through expunging the felony. So we want to go forward with expanding that definition from that Senate bill. And to give you some background here, there was a school board member in Saginaw. He was a lawyer and he was a longtime school board trustee. And he pleaded guilty to two felony charges stemming from handling an elderly woman's estate, agreeing to pay $120,000 back to her family. He admitted to misapplying fiduciary property and to committing aggravated perjury. And was sent, was sentenced to 10 years of deferred adjudication, probation. Now, here's somebody who's deferred adjudication probation, and he's embezzled and he's And he's embezzled and he's lied under oath. And I don't think this kind of person needs to be a trustee. And that's what the Governance Committee has been wrestling with is that there, this is just one example. I could give you other ones, but I just really am concerned about the qualifications of trustees in the state of Texas. I think we need to make them a little more stringent because, well, just tonight with the CAFRA report and the financial dealings that we work with, we want somebody who is the highest ethical caliber of handling money, for instance. We handle human resources, private information, and you need to be responsible with that kind of information that we, there's just things in this voluntary job that we have that really requires a person of higher quality and character than is presently required in the Texas state law. That's what I'll say about that. So, Mr. Durant, is that at the point where we can ask for support on that piece? All right.
So Madam President, we'd like to ask the body if there's support or interested in moving forward with bringing forth this legislation.
Yes. To, I think we will carry out a motion to make it official there. So to the Board of Trustees, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to entertain a motion to expand the, that our district recommended, expanding the Senate bill to not allow someone to run for school board who has received deferred adjudication.
So Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees recommend, support the governance recommendation for an expansion of Senate Bill Number 2283 from the 2019 legislative session and bring that recommendation forward to our legislators in the 2020, 21 school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Been moved by Justine Durant and seconded by Winford Adams. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Board, for that approval.
Thank you. And I think that's all we have. We also have, as a Governance Committee, asked if I'm, that we get an update around our COVID-19, what's happening within the district. We've seen, you know, we get emails every time there's a case and we just want to make sure that not, we're being transparent and that the Board's kept abreast on where we are and how we're managing the pandemic within our school district. And so we had asked that Chief Colbert, if he could provide us with an update.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Police, Keith Colbert, for our update on COVID-19 at this time, please.
Good afternoon, Madam President, other trustees, and Dr. Watson. Give me one second, let me share my screen and I will be able to present this presentation for you. Can you see it, Jeremy?
Yes, Chief, we can see it.
Thank you so much. So this is a quick overview of our, the process that we put in place for spring, the process we've been using for some time now to stop the spread of COVID on our campuses. So let me jump right into it. So we've really established our process based on what is our operational process as well as our day-to-day standards. And it's been established on the industry standards for emergency management. So you see the cycle that's in front of you, this emergency preparedness circle. And so we've established our plan based on prevention, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. And as we've gone through this, one of my colleagues, I believe it was Jeremy, as we were really beginning the infancy of this and really putting things together, he just organically mentioned that our processes must, must fit the health and safety of our students and staff and has to be paramount in the process, which really aligns to our district values of we base our decisions on best was, on what's best for our students. And so we've taken this process and we put it into practice. And as daily as we move through the process, this is really how it's come to pass for us. So our first steps for prevention has been, we have a, we've established a stop the spread safety walks. And those are members of our emergency management team. We partner with our campus leaders to ensure that they have the resources and the systems in place to keep their kids and staff safe. We've also established protocols and purchased, excuse me, we've also purchased and installed social distancing markers in our buildings and our meeting rooms and also in our buses just to ensure the safety for that. We purchased Plexiglas, put those in strategic locations throughout the building. That's also in an effort to protect our state, our staff and our students. And then we have a mitigation phase where we partner with a medical provider. We contracted with this medical provider to assist us with our check-in, the work process for our employees. We established isolation rooms on our campuses. We've had multiple, multiple rooms within campuses in case we had an infected individual or we need to have them staged until it's time for them to transition to a medical facility or home. Our operations team did a phenomenal job of putting together some cleaning protocols that we continually refine as we see gaps in our processes. So we can, can ensure that the sanitation of our buildings and our disinfectant areas are taken care of as fast as possible. And then we had a collaborative team, cross-functional team here in the district that put together a comprehensive plan, I believe it was somewhat about 60, 66 pages. And we submitted that to Harris County Public Health. And to mention about public health, they have, they visited us here at the district two weeks ago to see our processes and watch how we were doing our contact tracing and just kind of evaluate our processes. The, the epidemiologist nurse who was here left and kind of gave us a thumbs up and said that we were on par with their standards in some areas we even exceeded here in the district. So we were proud of that.
Chief Colbert, we are doing contact tracing?
Yes, ma'am. I'm gonna contact, I'm gonna get to that in one second for you. Yes, ma'am, we are.
Great.
Yes, ma'am. And the third phase is our PP, you see, we, in our preparation, our preparedness phase, excuse me, we acquired thousands of PPE items such as face masks, face shields, and hand sanitizers that we both distributed to our, our staff and our students for their daily use. Each building has established building entry protocols. And so that's where you see temperature checks, social distancing, along with our visitor, our campus visitor restriction guidelines that we put in place just to reduce any unnecessary visits to the campus that would expose our students. And then with an emergency manager, we created a ZipCo tracker. And those ZipCo trackers allows us to track our positive and active cases and recover cases here in spring specifically to our school, where our schools sit, as well as the top 10 ZipCos where our, our staff resides. And step four, you see where some of the processes and the responses occur. And this is where you see we have developed a, the COVID Task Force. And that Task Force is comprised of approximately 25 members, which is HR, emergency management, operations, as well as our health services team. And so this team has put a lot of work in to continue to keep our staff and students safe. And then you see we transfer that team, their work that they do on a day-to-day base, transfers over to our emergency management team. We have a 24-hour contact tracing team, which I think you just, you asked about earlier. And that team meets, whenever we have a case, they work up until the wee hours in the early in the morning to track down every person that is put into our file so we can try and mitigate any incidents that would bring the virus or allow the virus to remain on campus. So that team also has an AM and PM COVID case protocol review. And this is where we review every case that we're dealing with on that day and the day prior. And that team really spends a lot of time refining the process, finding gaps, and trying to close those gaps as they identify them. And then our communication team, we've partnered with them, they've done a phenomenal job for us of sending our, our community communication pieces. And this work is valuable because it's always timely information and timely notification that goes out to our parents and our community, and we couldn't do that just by ourselves. So. And then lastly, you'll see our recovery process. We've established a second partnership with an outside medical provider where we get free testing for our employees. In the, in the event that someone is exposed or they feel like they need a test, we will refer them to this independent contract vendor that we have where we can get 24-hour, I'm sorry, less than 24-hour responses on their test. And then we have a disinfecting protocols. If we happen to have a person with COVID in a building or is expected to have COVID, be COVID positive, the, the operations team goes in and they have a disinfecting protocols that they follow each and every time. And that has a check and balance system that we put in place just to ensure that we, there's no gaps and we don't have a location in the building that we just happened to miss because it, it missed the operation team. So there's a check and balance system. And then lastly, and probably the most important part, is we've established a return to campus or return to work team. And that team's sole purpose is to work with the student and the staff member to try and work them either through their, their educational process, if they're off campus, to get the resources they need to them or available to them so they can learn off campus. And then for our staff, our HR teams work, works with our employees to make sure they are married with the right leave balance, relief bank that they need in order to allow them time off campus where they're out of the leave bank if they need to, or move into their leave bank if that's so required. And then lastly, that team partners together to return learning back to what we are accustomed to here in spring. So that is our process. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. I'm open to any questions, Madam President, if you have anything.
I know one of the things that I was glad to hear in our governance meeting is that we're not seeing a spread in any of our campuses. We're seeing, if you want to speak to that a little bit, Dr. Watson?
Yes, one of the things that we were sharing with the team that we're not seeing spread across our campuses, we're seeing individuals, more singleton cases to where individuals, based upon what they've done on the weekend or in their own private time, come to work and or report to us that they've tested positive. And so the team is doing a good job in terms of making sure that the protocols are being followed as, as Chief Colbert indicated, we are and do meet on a weekly basis to look at our numbers as well as get feedback from staff regarding next steps. You should have seen some information I sent you from our ACE Committee, where they are giving us feedback. Instead of telling the teachers what we're going to do, we're using them to help us decide what to do to help ease their concerns. In addition to that, there's a meeting that's coming up with Spring AFT and members of our ACE Team and Administration, where we're gonna work on some bigger items in that survey together this week as well to help us come up with solutions for that as well. So we're using our staff and our teachers to help us come up with solutions that they want for themselves.
I have been pleasantly surprised that we haven't seen clusters and spikes amongst our athletes and our extracurricular students. Not everybody has been so fortunate. I was wondering, Dr. Watson, if you could talk about sort of our planning and protocols around that?
So we haven't seen major spikes within our athletes. We are looking at that and monitoring what they're doing in terms of practicing. We have had athletes test positive, and so there is quarantining that happens when individual tests positive, which could be part of the athletic team as well. And so we're monitoring that and monitoring any positivity that comes from that. And one of the things that we've got to continue doing is making sure, you know, it's so easy that when you're playing a sport or you're doing an activity to get into it and you take off your mask, we've got to make sure that during the time individuals aren't playing that they are wearing their mask and it's not something that they can choose to do. We've al, we've already indicated at the beginning of the year in our protocols that it's required, masks are required. And so we've got to continue pushing harder to make sure that our coaches and our student athletes or our student participants remember to keep their mask on.
Yeah, because it's easy to get complacent when you're, when you're there and you're amongst everyone every day, and so that's good. Are there any restrictions or limitation around the free testing we're offering the staff?
No. So you want to talk about the testing the staff, Ken and Ann?
Here, I'll, I'll lead in, I'll let you finish up. So our process allows our, our staff members, if they desire to be tested, they register, they will contact our emergency management team. We will set them up and we will either set the appointment for them or we give the necessary paperwork so they can set their own appointment. They, the rapid test typically, we've heard, they have that back within two hours. And so we've, the last I checked, I wish, the last I checked, we've, we've probably sent upwards of 20 to 40 people, allow them to go test. And so that's been a partnership that's really given us peace of mind for our employees. And so if they feel like they're infected, they have a chance to go receive their test and really eases the anxiety. But it also allows us to bring our employees back to work so we, where they can offer whatever their learning environment to enrich that learning environment for our students.
Okay. So anyone that feels they're at risk or has a need, they're able to get that free test?
Absolutely. And you want to add anything else onto that?
Not much to add to it. The only thing that we do ask is that when we send our employees, that they do take their insurance card with them. Because through TRS, through, if you're on the district's health plan, and most all of the private insurances are allowing the testing to be done for free. And so we do encourage and really ask our employees to take their insurance card with them because there's no cost. However, we do cover the cost if, to ensure that no employee has an out-of-pocket cost.
Thank you.
Dr. Watson, are we finding that the provisions of the FFCRA that allow our employees to take, is it 14 days they get to take?
10.
10 days. Is that sufficient? Is that working out for our folks?
I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Hill, who facilitates that process with FFCRA.
Yes, Mr. Adams, I would say that it has been sufficient for us at this time, in some cases, because of the protocols that we follow here, an employee may not use the entire time. And that's in large part due to the advantage that we have with the rapid testing that we've been able to secure for employees.
Thank you.
I thank the Administration for bringing that. I just want to make sure as a body that we are aware, we're informed, we're able to share with our community that it is a priority for us and that we're going above and beyond to ensure the safety of our staff as well as our students. So thank you. And that's all I have from the Governance Committee tonight.
And thank you to the Governance Committee, our representatives, our lead, Justine Durant, Deborah Jensen, and Winford Adams. Thank you for your hard work on this committee. And Chief, we appreciate your report. So thank you to Chief Ken Colbert as well. Our next item is the consent agenda. And to our public, our Board, use the consent agenda in our work session. We spend a lot of time going through in presentations and discussions of our consent agenda. So we do not continue that on the regular board meeting. So I will entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all the items listed on the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Winford Adams, seconded by Janet Gonzalez, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.076. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the Board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the Board reconvenes in open session. The time is now 9:15 p.m. We will now reconvene and resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now 10:41 p.m. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Executive Chief of District Operations, Mark Miranda, for additional discussion on safety and security bid package.
Yes, President of the House, Dr. Watson, members of the Board, thank you. This is a new agenda item for the Safety and Security Bid Package. This is the eighth guaranteed maximum price. This is in addition to our current safety and security projects. And this will, this guaranteed maximum price covers the safety and security updates for shooter detection systems at our high schools and our ninth-grade centers. And the project, this particular project will be covered by the proceeds of the Safety and Security Grant for Shooter Detection Systems that was approved at last Thursday's Board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will now address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move the Board render final order to terminate the contract of Jarvis Harry as presented in closed session and to authorize the Superintendent to provide notice of the Board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code.
Do we have a second? It's been moved by Janet Gonzalez, seconded by Justine Durant, that the Board render a final order to terminate the contract of Jarvis Harry as presented in closed session and to authorize the Superintendent to provide notice of the Board's action to the impacted employee pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board declare the probationary contract of Jonathan Tucker to be void pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code and approve the termination of his employment with Spring ISD for inappropriate communication with a student effective immediately. I further move that the Board authorize the Superintendent of Schools or designee to notify this employee of the action taken by the Board.
Second.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Winford Adams Jr., seconded by Don Davis, that the Board declare the probationary contract of Jonathan Tucker to be void pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code and approve the termination of his employment with Spring ISD for inappropriate communications with the student effective immediately. I further move that the Board authorize the Superintendent of Schools or designee to notify this employee of the action taken by the Board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the Board approve the Safety and Security Package, One, Eighth Guaranteed Maximum Price in the amount of $540,155.
We have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, seconded by Justine Durant, that the Board approve the Safety and Security Package, One, Eighth Guaranteed Maximum Price in the amount of $540,155. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. There are no other items on tonight's agenda. So, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Okay, Janet. It's been moved by Justine Durant and seconded by Janet Gonzalez that the Board of Trustees adjourn this meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. There's no further business. This meeting is officially adjourned at 10:46 p.m.